Okay, this is a meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education, February 14th, 2019. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss confidential legal matters pertaining to union negotiations and confidential personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in executive session. So, welcome to the Hyde Park Central School Board, Board of Education meeting. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Happy Valentine's Day. I'd like to thank our spouses for allowing us to be here today. And thank you guys for taking the time off to be here. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So there is no agenda modifications. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Upcoming events. There will be no school tomorrow and on Monday celebrating President's Day. That's a long weekend. On Wednesday, February 20th, Ralph R. Smith's STEM Fair. On Thursday, February 21st, there will be Violet Avenue's STEM Fair and North Park Elementary's STEM Fair. On Tuesday, February 26th, will be Havilin Middle Schools' pops concert. And the next Board of Ed meeting will be Thursday, February 28th, at the district office. For this time, does anyone have any pride?
Before we move to pride, we have a surprise for the board members, a gift from the President's ladies. So Jay, do you know how to pull that up?
Thanks to our amazing Board of Education for all you do to support the arts in Hyde Park. We appreciate you.
Our student board member is not here, but informally, I'll take a stab at a couple. One is our amazing track team. I don't know if you had a chance to read the article about winning the Mahal championship on a night where even Sarah Trainer wasn't there. So our athlete that's competing nationally, so always pumps up our scores, unfortunately was ill, so, and they won the Mahals anyway. So they were totally excited. We have three girls competing in the state gymnastics tournament coming up. We were very happy with the amount of press that we're getting for our upcoming musical. Barnum, there was a big spread in the Northern Duchess news, so a nice promo for our upcoming musical. I don't know if anybody had any other specific, sports-specific?
Well, the girls that are participating at the state's level, a lot of it is, the precedent was set because the girls did win the section title.
Yes.
Alright, for those not familiar, in the competition we participated, we participate in the Mahal League, which is a subsection of Section 9. So the track team won the Mahal championship, both boys and girls. They will be completing at the section championship, which is the next higher level and incorporates quite a few other schools in the competition. The girls gymnastic team actually won the section title, which is everybody in Section 9, which includes parts of Duchess, Ulster County. So it's a more significant win. They probably don't want me to say that, but it is a more significant win in terms of the competition levels they face. So it is an outstanding performance, and the girls that qualified, based on their scores, will be moving up to states, which obviously is as high as you can go. And Sarah Trainer, the one that Greer mentioned, missed the competition at the Mahals. She has been competing and competing at national level. She was competing down in the city, looking to place at the next level, which I believe may be a regional level encompassing like the Northeast United States, which finally leads to a high school competition that's nationwide. She's been at that level. And to take some kind of star out of a program like that and have the other girls step up and win is an amazing bit of fortitude. I mean, I'm sure that not only did they have to compete at their best level, I'm sure a couple of the girls had to compete at different events to step in and fill in where Sarah would have competed. So it's an amazing accomplishment by those young ladies and by the boys filling in and winning their championship also. A double tap like that is an amazing accomplishment.
Greer, I'm so far away, it's hard to hear, but did we mention the cheerleaders? They also won their?
No.
No, we haven't. We didn't, no. Yeah.
They also won their, the competition at Walkeel?
This past Saturday, yes. Yeah. Without our student board member here, we don't have our comprehensive sports update.
And it's tough to fill in with the lack of information in the Poughkeepsie Journal, so you know, if you're not in the schools talking to the coaches and stuff, it's very difficult to gather all the information.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have something else. I was at the Netherwood STEM Fair last night. It was really fun, and it showed to me the improvement at that school that I've, in the past, felt was lacking. So I was very pleased to see, and I think has a lot to do with Christine being the principal there. So kudos to her and to the kids that were quite good at showing me how everything worked, the little things. It was really a nice time. Looking forward to seeing the other schools as well.
Alright, thanks.
Any other pride? Okay, superintendent's report?
We have, we're gonna move on to our formal pride. From time to time, we have something extraordinary, and we invite someone in to be publicly recognized. So on our agenda tonight is Will, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Houli to come up with Will and either, we have a lot of visitors today from CTI and the Children's Home to help us celebrate and congratulate Will.
So, Will, congratulations. I'll just do some quick introductions. I'll ask Christina Lee and CJ Kelly, who are teachers, who will come up and talk a little bit about Will's accomplishments. This is a student of distinction, which we come out to boards like yours periodically over the course of the year. There's really only about nine of them that we do per year, and they're from our three educational programs, SBC, Beta, and CTI. And accompanying us tonight, as well as Christina and CJ, is Duane Girac, who is the assistant principal at Beta. And then from the Shodan's Home, and Golden, and Cora's, and Caitlin Van Zetven. It's close, anyway. So I'll let you ladies take it away, and again, congratulations. So stay right here with them.
Stay right here. He can maybe come up and shake all our hands tonight. What do you think?
Good evening. I've known Will since October 2017. Right now, he's in my 11th grade US History class and my 12th grade Echo class. Okay, during the month of January, Will stood as an example of what daily attendance, hard work, diligence, and persistence can do for a person. In mid-December, Will and I had a conversation about the possibility of his qualifying for the US History Regents in January. I laid out for Will the work he's gonna have to do and to complete, and the date it needed to be completed in order for him to meet that goal. Okay, this actually included Will bringing work home across Christmas break to get it done. Okay? Will rose to the challenge. He returned in January with the completed work and continued toward his goal. We regularly set short-term goals, and Will worked diligently, both in class and out of class, to achieve his goals. Did he meet his goals every day? Nope. And who among us does?
Yeah.
Okay? But what distinguished Will and really impressed me about Will was that he worked through his difficulties he encountered. He returned to school every day, picked up his pen, he persevered, and he left yesterday's frustrations behind. He didn't waver from his goal of getting into the Regents, to the point that he actually asked me to call home and ask that they push him if he or they felt he was slacking. Not too many kids are gonna do that, okay? Great part of this story is that Will also attends CTI and the Construction Trade Program. I contacted Mrs. Kelly, his academic teacher over at CTI, about this student of distinction nomination. And her response was, "Yeah, well, we already nominated him for February, student of distinction." It's like, "Okay, then." So I said, "Well, what do you gotta say about him?" So they actually said that his, a lot of the same things I said. He comes to school every day. He's prepared to work. He's polite, well-spoken, conducts himself in a professional manner. In addition to giving 100%, he owns up to his mistakes, and he rectifies them immediately. And by the way, folks, if there was any doubt, yeah, Will took and will pass that US History Regents.
We all wanna shake their hand, so.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Keep up the good work. We'll see you at graduation in a year.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Well done.
Great job.
Thank you.
We know that you have probably homework to do tonight and others, so please, it is not rude. You do not have to stay, so, you know, feel free to get home to more great work. And thank you to the CTI and Beta staff for coming out. All the support here tonight for Will is amazing, so thank you. Thank you. Good to see everybody. Congratulations. Yeah, we have three presentations tonight, so other than that, I don't have any special updates.
Okay, up is, next is North Park Elementary School update from Lynette.
Lynette, thank you for the beautiful setup in there. That was amazing, yeah. Always nice to see some North Park teachers out showing support, so thank you for coming.
Good evening, greetings and welcome to the esteemed members of the Board of Education. Our superintendent, Dr. Greer Reitcheck, deputy superintendent, Aviva Kafka. Thank you to my amazing faculty and staff members, and our wonderful PTA members that are here tonight, and a special thank you to my administrative colleagues that are here and support. I am honored to host this evening's Board of Education and glad that you chose us to spend your Valentine's Day with this evening, so thank you very much. North Park Elementary has a shared vision that we established collectively last year. We collaborated with our PTA, our faculty, staff members, inclusive of our custodial staff, and our kitchen staff, students, and we came together and we created a vision that reads, "We are lifelong learners with unique strengths. We think critically, act collaboratively, and serve as compassionate, respectful, and intelligent members of a globally connected community." We recite this at the beginning of each faculty meeting, and we also include it in correspondence as a reminder of our collectively shared vision. Our North Park Elementary pledge is recited each morning by students. Our students do the morning announcements, and it is a reminder for us to check our moral compass on a daily basis so that we remember to do the right thing, as the pledge states, even when no one is watching. So this is the enrollment for North Park Elementary. We proudly serve 476 scholars. 1% of our scholars are Asian, 5% are multiracial, 9% are Black, 15% Hispanic, and 70% white. Here are our North Park Elementary building map scores, with the scale being 0 to 12 ineffective, 13 to 14 developing, 15 to 17 effective, and 18 to 20 highly effective. I am proud that, for the first year, our entire building administered mid-year or winter maps to students in kindergarten through 5th grade as a means to help to drive and inform instruction. And some class boasts almost 80% of students that have already met proficiency before the year is even over. These are the percentage of students at North Park that demonstrated proficiency in ELA according to the 3 to 5 state assessments. So the color codes are by school year. Blue represents the year 1516, red represents 1617, and green is 1718. So you see the proficiency of 3rd graders for each of those years, 4th graders, and These are the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency in math, and the color codes are the same. Blue, 1516, red, 1617, green, 1718. And while we had a slight dip in 3rd grade, you see that 4th and 5th are moving forward and upward, and you will see some of the initiatives that we are taking to make sure that all of our students are maximizing their potential. These are the percentage of students that demonstrated proficiency in science. Science is offered to 4th grade students, and the color codes are the same. So in 1516, approximately 90% of students reach proficiency in 1617, 75%, and in 1718, These are the percentage of test refusals. So students sometimes, or parents, will send in letters, and students can refuse to take the 3rd through 5th grade state assessments. And as you can see most remarkably, that in 1718, we saw a dramatic decrease of students that refused test refusals, that refused tests from 3rd through 5th grade in ELA and math. So there were significantly less students that refused to take tests in each of the grade levels in 201718. And that's represented by the green bar. Our building leadership team established two goals this year. One goal was to identify before and after-school activities that would be most relevant to North Park students allowable with Title I funds via the creation and dissemination of parent surveys. So as a team, we did what is called a SWOT analysis, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And out of that analysis, that's how we came up with the goals, and we created surveys for students and for parents and community members. The parent surveys are six short items, and the student surveys are two items that they will be given in the classroom so that we can give their feedback about the type of enrichment activities that they would like to take part in at North Park Elementary. Our second goal was to look at Title I, but to make more of an effort to include our community and parents via the School Parent Compact, and to really look at the activity, services, and programs and outline how, as an entire student and staff and community body, we can move forward to help students to excel academically. So we really wanna get parent input and work collaboratively with our students and community members as we push forward our BLT goals. So North Park embarked on numerous improvement strategies. We have the addition of an AIS math teacher this year. We continue to work with Generation Ready on targeted professional development around literacy and the implementation of the units of study. We have the opportunity this year to attend the Summer Teachers College Reading and Writing Project in New York City. There is a reunion with Teachers College that's coming up in March. The teachers have taken the opportunity to attend. And we continue to have professional development by our own faculty and staff. We just had a bar modeling PD by our teachers and AIS math teacher. We have PD by reading AIS teachers in the morning and during faculty meetings. And we also analyze data with the support of Kim Niesel and Jen Kreiser-Aimy around performance in our 3 to 5 assessments. We also hosted Greg Tegn this year, and he conducted math workshops and a family night around math workshops and different ways to implement various math strategies. Our technology integration is huge, and we're really proud of the work that we are doing in the building with our teachers, with our BOSI support, with the technology department here in Hyde Park. We had an hour of code dance party for 4th and 5th graders, and our kindergarteners actually worked with robotics. So that was an exciting time to have all of the students in one venue. We were here, and they were able to program different activities on the computer. We use our Chromebook carts regularly for instruction and/or assessments, for writing, for editing. We have our interactive televisions in every classroom. And we have morning PD by our technology integration specialists, as well as our technology department. This year, we are participating in PARP. One school, one book is our goal this year, and so we are reading Stuart Little. We look forward to our STEM Fair on the 21st, where we collaborate with community members as well to make sure that our students have and engage in time around the areas of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. We have so much to be proud for. I mean, we're proud of our students. I'm extremely proud of our committed and dedicated and hard-working staff members. This year, we were honored by the Duchess County Legislature. We received a commendation for our efforts in recycling. We were runner-up in Duchess County for recycling program, and we communicated with the community to make that happen. The students take an active part in it. One of our TAs, Gina Gross, really spearheads that program, and we just support all of the efforts here, and it's really, really great. You can see evidence of it throughout the building. We still are the old school that has the certified schoolyard habitat, and you can see that. I mean, it's not so pleasant right now, but it is outside, and you will see the certification out there, which is a huge source of pride for us. We also have a sensory path, which was designed by our occupational therapist, and it's right out here in the hallway. So when students need a break and they need that sensory activity to kind of calm down and/or get some exercise, then they can use the sensory path, and we change it up about every few weeks. So it's just a great addition to our North Park community. We collaborate with Avid at FDR. When the months get a little bit warmer, the students will walk over and work with our 5th grade students. This year, we also collaborate with Avid students from Havilin Middle School, and they take a bus over once a month and read with our 1st graders. We have tons of exciting Black History Month celebrations, and those are evident throughout the building. We have a math book read coming up with Ms. Parker's Algebra II class from FDR. Our Health and Highways, we had an assembly, Be True to You, which is anti-bullying assembly for all students to participate in. We have our circus, numerous PTA events, winter workshops. And we were really proud this year to host a bus safety assembly where we collaborated with our bus drivers, and they actually came in and did a skit for us about bus safety. And it was really, really great. We had the chance to videotape it, and the students absolutely loved it, and we can refer back to that. So that was a really great assembly. The bottom picture is of us being awarded by the Duchess County Legislature. We had students attend that as well. We continue to collaborate with the community. We have the St. James Reading Program that happens once a week on Thursdays. We have Lions Club, eyeglass donation, Sparrow Smash, Stuff the Bust. Our recycling program, again, was a community collaborative effort that we continue to embark on. Our science fair this year, we collaborate with the St. Petersburg Library, and our 3rd graders wrote essays about eagles. They happen to be having a presentation about prey, and they featured our student work in the library, and students were very excited to see that. We will participate in IBM E Week next year with our engineers, and we continue to collect food and gifts for our families in need. The Rotary Club recently made donations of dictionaries to all of our 3rd graders, and we participate in arts and ed and numerous other activities here at North Park. Pageant for Peace is another such activity where we collect tons of food to give away to families here at North Park. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Again, we are honored to host you, and at this time, I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Yeah, Lynette, your goal statement number two for your BLT, the School Parent Compact. Now, that's usually a very dry piece. How are you integrating that into your school?
Yeah, you're right. It's one of those things that you kind of check off when you have Title I funds. So our BLT met just this week, and we were talking about ways that we can kind of spice it up, so we had ideas of maybe inviting parents out for a day or an evening, making it filled with activities and learning experiences, make it more than just a kind of a check-off-the-box type of thing, but making it very meaningful. This is our first year really having Title I funds, so while we understand it is something that we need to do, but we want to make it so that parents understand that we are taking their input very seriously. Hence the idea to have the surveys to gather information. So we were thinking of having a parent compact, having a vehicle for parents to So we were thinking of having a parent compact, having a vehicle for parents to complete the surveys at that time as well and really get their input about what they want to see here at North Park for their students.
Any other questions? Thank you Lynette.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up we'll have the energy program update from Jill Paracel.
I have to follow Lynette. That's going to be tough. Amazing. Okay, so this is my annual update for the energy program. I am updating you now before budget on the last fiscal year, so on 2017, 18. And I guess it was the board's choice to do it now before budget because we were doing it in the fall because that was more, you know, sooner after the new year had started. But I think this makes a lot of sense to do it before budget since it impacts budget. So just to remind everyone that the program goals are to first make sure that our schools are safe and comfortable for our students and staff during the school day and to improve conditions in our schools where possible. And then to educate and create a culture of awareness in our schools. And I always try to hammer those home as the two first goals of the program and I want everybody to understand that. And then after that, the third and fourth goals are to eliminate energy waste where possible and save money to keep it in the district. So changes this year that impacted our energy use. We have to look at the things that affect how we use our energy in order to understand where we're using it and how we're saving. Last year was almost 14% colder than the previous year during the heating months. So we used more energy, but using energy allows us to save energy. If it's a warm year and we're not really, you know, using a lot of energy, there's not a whole lot to save. And it was also cooler during the summer months, so less days that needed as much air conditioning which we only have in very sparse areas and window units. The cost of commodities, the electric remains stable. There's not really a change in our electric costs. There haven't been for a few years. Our natural gas rose a little bit and the oil actually came up about 25% from the previous year. All of our commodity is bought through our utility, Central Hudson, and then whoever our oil bid winner is for that year. So all of our prices are subject to fluctuation with market price. We're not locked into any one price. And I do, I would like to investigate third-party energy supplies because I think there can be savings there instead of just buying it through the utility. And we have the ability to do that if that's something that we want to do. And then we didn't have too many equipment mechanical changes during the year. We did the previous year, but not last year. We did have additional plug load added to North Park here in the fall which was absolutely necessary. And you can, no adjustment was made in the data, so we didn't, we didn't put any adjustment in there saying that we put more equipment there. So you do see it in the data very clearly, but it was something that was absolutely necessary and we don't want to take, we didn't find that it was, that we had to adjust for that because it's something that would have been done anyway. We, for the life of the program, we did surpass $1 million in savings. That's the entire life of the program. When we started August 2013 until December 2018 is where we are now. So that's the entire length of the energy program. And it's about 21% savings which is 21% over, over what would have been spent or had you not have the energy program. The last school year, so 17, 18, the program savings were $186,554 and that's at about 20%, which is, that's a good savings. There's always more to get, but that's, 20% is great. And then that little pie there, I put up there so you can see visually that the brown sliv of the pie is your program savings. So you can see that's a good chunk of money that didn't have to be spent on utilities that otherwise would have had we not been conscious in creating this culture of conservation in our schools. And then the net program savings, so that's gross savings. The net program savings for 17, 18 is $141,733.86 and that is just the gross savings less all the program costs which now do not include the fees to Synergistic, our consulting company because our last payment to them was last August. So we are not paying them anymore. So that's a six-figure net savings that is back to the district that we don't, we don't need to spend anymore. And as long as we continue running the program and keeping our data updated, they will continue to provide lifelong support and they have already. I've called to discuss, you know, data questions with consultants and I've called to discuss HVAC concerns with consultants and they're there all the time to help and guide. And so the support is there and they will send anybody here if we request it. So it's kind of a win-win situation now.
And you still get to go to their trainings? Like you still get to go to their?
I do. This year they were supposed to have a conference in January, but they decided to make it virtual online for everybody. So, which is great for them saving money and they can involve a lot more training personnel, speakers, and professionals. But it does, it doesn't allow for any kind of networking among specialists, but, so they are, they do a lot of online training. So, and we don't, we don't have to pay for that, so.
Good.
Okay. Oops. Okay, so the environmental impact of what we saved or rather what energy we did not use is 9,179,49 KBTUs. So what's a KBTU? The BTU is the British Thermal Unit and the K is thousands. And we reduce all our energy because electricity is measured in kilowatts, our gas is measured in CCFs and our oil is measured in gallons. So in order to say a cumulative measure of energy, we have to reduce it all to a common unit. So it's all converted to BTUs and that allows us to see what we saved total. And that amount of energy, I like to relate it to things that people understand because they say, "Oh great, you saved, you saved that." What does it mean? So it's the equivalent of 689 metric tons of carbon dioxide which is the same as 143 passenger cars not driven for a year, over 17,000 tree seedlings planted and grown for 10 years, and more than 3.4 million plastic bags not produced, and 229,666 cheeseburgers not produced. So producing all those cheeseburgers, yeah, making all those cheeseburgers would produce the same amount of carbon dioxide that we've managed to save. So think about that the next time you go through the drive-thru. And the earth is happy that we're making this impact. So not only are we saving money, we are, we're doing our part for our carbon footprint for the district which is responsible as, you know, human beings and I'm sure the taxpayers are happy that we're being responsible. The energy program is continuing to be involved in the schools. So I've been going around to schools and we've been doing ongoing training and communication in faculty meetings and with our new equipment and any concerns that are going on in the schools. I've been addressing comfort complaints that are, that seem to be ongoing and there's been some principals that had concerns in their schools that, that we want to do more in the schools, but these concerns haven't been addressed. So I've been working one-on-one with some of the principals to really get to the bottom of the comfort in these areas and what we can do about it. Because people don't want to hear, "Oh, that'll be taken care of with the next project." Or, you know, "We know it's a problem, but there's nothing we can do." But I feel like there's always something, you can always do more and if people, if kids are wearing hoodies or the teachers are constantly complaining that it's too cold or too hot, then they're not focused on teaching and learning. And so I feel like that needs to be addressed where we can instead of just saying, "Oh, we'll get you with the next project." And we're going to work to put the energy program into the science curriculum as it comes up next year because it's, I think it's 4th grade, is it 3rd or 4th, does energy? And there's a big unit on it that we can incorporate the program into as a regular thing. And then there's some challenges out there that would be great to get the schools involved in next year. There's plastic bag collection challenges where you can, you weigh the plastic bags, all the schools can collect them and, you know, we can, you can win park benches and you can win, you know, just things for outside, good things. But it'd be great to get the schools involved in something like that. You know, competition breeds success. And then I mentioned that energy supply purchasing, I would, that's something I think would be good to look into as like a next step to where we can save more energy or save more money instead of just purchasing from our utility. And then I'm going to be looking into our AC in our buildings and the buildings are, they're built a long time ago, so the circuits, there's not a lot of them. And so the building can only take so much load that's put on it. And there's, every year we add more ACs as we have more 504s and IEPs that require them. And sometimes we have to move them to different rooms and it's, it's a lot. And we're starting to have problems in the buildings with them being able to handle this many ACs. So we want to find out what really the impact is of those air conditioning units in the And then just to continue to look for rebates and alternative funding as we go forward with the capital work that's going to be done. So the capital work. We did the controls project, the million-dollar controls project in all the schools where we switched out the pneumatic controls for DDC controls and we put some new equipment in Havlin. That had an impact as far as we were better able to make some things work that we couldn't work before. And we found a lot of things that weren't working. We were able to repair a lot of pieces to the UNIVents. Every UNIVent seemed to have something wrong with it. And so we found that our electricity went up a little bit and our energy use went up because we had more things working now finally that were supposed to be working. The new equipment in Havlin, you can see in the data, and I'll show you in a minute, that the savings, they went down a little bit. We're still saving there, but you can see exactly the year that we did the project how the use of the energy, because it went up, the savings went down a little bit, but because it's more efficient equipment, we might be using more electricity, but the equipment's efficient. So it's kind of balancing each other out. And I think that we're going to see that when we go forward with the capital work that's going to be done for, especially in this building. The design that was done for this building is probably the best design out there right now that could be put in a building. And I'm really excited to see how the savings and the impact that that has on this building. For the Havlin project, we didn't adjust, we didn't put the adjustments in the data for the new equipment that we put in there as far, like taking out the old equipment and putting in the new equipment. I could have had the engineers do a building simulation and an adjustment for that, but because of the way it looks, let me show you. Here, do I have a pointer in here? Oops, oh no.
Now you did it.
I know, I broke it. Okay, is there a pointer? A laser? Is there a laser in here? What is it? Oh, okay. Oh, it doesn't work though. You can't see it. So on the bottom, one, two, three chunks in is 2016. That's when we finished putting the equipment in Havlin. And you can see how the two kind of chunks before that would be 14 and 15 in the winter. You see how the savings is really high on those bars and then it goes down in 16. So there's still savings there. This is the oil at Havlin, the usage. There's still savings, but you see how it lowers because we're using more energy because we finally have heat there now and we finally have equipment working. And we're starting to control it and you can see how we gained control of the equipment and how the savings, how you see it in the savings. We didn't do the adjustment because at the time, discussing it with facilities and the synergistic consultants, they felt that if we put in the adjustment for that new equipment, it would be adding savings to the program that the program really shouldn't take credit for that. So we felt that the data balanced itself out with the extra usage, but more efficient equipment. And we decided not to go ahead and put that adjustment in there and take more savings for the program. So it was a really very conservative decision to not make that adjustment. So the data is pure as it is with no, no engineers' adjustments to it for that work. And I'm not sure if that's what we'll do with the capital work that's coming up because we do have the ability to make adjustments and to have professional engineers do that. And it's, it has to pass a, the smell test, like does it make sense? Is it reasonable? So we'll look at it and then it'll be up to the district to decide whether they want to make that adjustment for the program or not. I'm thinking we probably won't for the same reasons is it'll take extra credit, it'll give extra credit to the energy program where it's, it's not really the energy program's savings because the district is going to do that work anyway. And thanks to everybody in the district. It's, it's not my program. It's not, you know, it's the whole district's program and everybody who participates makes it happen, especially from the top down. The principals are fantastic and they really lead their buildings and it shows. So I couldn't do it without everybody here.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a quick question. With the updates in the hardware in this building?
Yes.
To achieve what we want to achieve in terms of humidity levels and all those other things, fresh air, turnovers and stuff like that. A lot of that was trying to be accomplished over the last two years with add-ons. We brought in humidifiers, we brought in air conditioners, we did a lot of things that would just plug it into the wall and bring new equipment in.
Right.
What is the expectation when the capital project is completed where now we're, we're getting rid of all of that, we're integrating it into the base equipment that's in the building? We're going to replace the old stuff with the new stuff. Should those savings start to go up again because of that integration?
I think what you'll see is you won't need that equipment. The system that's coming in here is...
Replace in that equipment.
Right, it's designed to do way better than any of that plug-in equipment could do. And it will be more efficient than what's here now. So you're going to, you're going to see savings. We're going to use energy, but I don't, I don't feel like we're going to use a whole lot more energy than we're using now because we're, we're using a lot of energy to try to do what we need to do, especially with the old UNIVents. They, the design of UNIVents is, it's terrible. I mean, they don't work in a very efficient way and they're not great for comfort. So, I mean, one of the main concerns when I came to the faculty meeting here, and Lynette will tell you, they said, "Well, they told us we're getting UNIVents. Are we getting UNIVents?" Because the concern is that they're drafty, they blow cold air. And I said, and I told them, "No, in this building, we're not, we're not doing the UNIVents." And it was like I told everybody they were getting lottery checks. So I think that that will solve a lot of issues. So I think that that will solve a lot of issues. And then the dedicated outdoor air system is going to solve your humidity issues, a lot of comfort issues, and I think there's going to be way more savings with that. It's, I think it's going to be pretty great.
I have a question. You mentioned earlier that the district isn't part of any kind of program that locks us into any rates...
Right.
...for oil or anything. I mean, why, why is that? Why aren't we, we locking into a lower rate?
Well, when I first got here, it was, I brought it up, but it was not a concern because the prices were, they were okay where they were. And locking into a rate, it might be a higher rate than the utility is giving you now, but it doesn't, it won't go up if the market price goes up. So it was, it was just decided that that wasn't an important thing to do at the time.
Well, but don't think, most of them, I know, I don't, I don't know how this would work for us, but mine works. If I lock into a rate, but the price drops, I pay the lower rate. You know, for, for oil, that and stuff. I mean, we don't do anything like that here?
We don't do anything like that here. We, well, our oil supply is the lowest bidder for oil, but as far as our utility, Central Hudson, we don't have, Central Hudson's deregulated, so everybody, everybody has the choice to buy their supply someplace else. Like, for your home, you have the choice to buy your supply from any other company. A lot of the, there's companies out there, like consortiums, that will find you these contracts with third-party supplies and lock you into rates. They look for districts that are huge and spend a lot of money. I don't think that we need to do that. I don't think we need to pay somebody to go out and find these, these rates. I think we can do that just fine, and I think it's something that's worth looking into. The better rates are for bigger accounts, but I think that with what we spend, we can still get a good rate from a third-party supply as compared to the utility. It might not be a whole lot, but I think there can be savings.
I think we're buying, I'm assuming we're buying our fuel oil on state contract, aren't we?
Yes.
Are we using BOSI's contract or state contract?
It's, right now, it's...
I think it's state contract.
It's state contract, yes.
I think it's state contract.
It's not, yeah.
So it fluctuates with the market. It's set...
It's us.
We pay a rate over wholesale price...
Yes.
Okay.
...for every load that we buy.
But we don't, we don't pay what, like, I would pay if I call up to get an oil delivery.
Yeah, yeah, it's considerably lower than what you're paying for your home oil.
It's a better price than a regular consume.
All right, I didn't understand how that all worked. Okay.
Yeah. And as far as, you know, the electricity, yeah, it's a deregulated market, it's an open market, we can go out and we can get it from a, from a, a third party. There's no guarantees with that either. I mean, there, there's a lot of, a lot of elements to it. You know, they can, they can picture, paint some pretty rosy pictures for you, and, and you can make calculations, things can change.
And save, and get a $12 rebate.
What's that?
And, right, and get a $12 rebate.
Well, or cost you $12 more.
Yeah.
You know, it's, there's no guarantees with it, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Couple of questions I had. Is, I'm interested in involvement in curriculum. I think we've been in the system now for, how many years, 5 years?
5.
5 years. What, what successes can you, have you had the opportunity to get into classrooms, working with students?
Only with the clubs, the after-school clubs.
Okay.
Not, not in the actual curriculum in the classroom.
Okay. But it sounds like you're going to make an end road on that? Is that what I heard with the...
Yes.
Okay, okay. I would think that that's something that we should be working toward. And I know that it's not just, you've got to somewhat be invited in to do that.
Well, and I think that was the, the problem when I first got here was, there was a little bit of feeling of overwhelmingness by the principals at the time with the curriculum. And I think that's when it had all changed, and, but now I feel like we're pretty comfortable there, and I think that it wouldn't be as big an issue.
Yep. And nothing will drive change like a bunch of 3rd graders.
Yeah.
You want to get something done, get, get them behind you. And then the other question, so it looks like overall, we've had about a 21% savings. And this is, and I, I remember all of the calculations of base year, and then we're looking at degree days and all those calculations. So we're looking about 21% overall. The last school year, we had about a 20% savings. Refresh my memory, has it been in that 21, you know, has it been relatively close to that savings on an annual basis?
Yeah, it's gone up slightly, like, you know, a percentage point or 2 every, every year or so, but it's, it's been about there.
So our, our year-over-year is going up?
Yes.
About a percentage?
Yes.
Each year? Okay, all right. Because I'm curious as to how we should be handling it as we make some pretty significant investment in our buildings, whether we should reestablish a new base. And that's, that's, that's something we could do. It will make it a little bit difficult, a little more difficult for us to think about what the overall savings has been, because you're really moving the mark. You're creating...
You can change the baseline...
Yeah.
But, but like you said, then you're moving it up, so you're, yeah, so you would have to, and I'm not sure how you could, there might be a way you can keep both, I don't know, but, and I don't know if that would be important.
No, to me, the whole goal is to continuously improve. So I might be more inclined to look at moving the base, and it's something we can talk about, would be to move the base to the new, you know, once these improvements have been made, so it's, it's out a couple of years yet. But, but move the base so that we now have, we're gaining from there. Our growth is from there, it's not from something that was calculated, you know, what will then be probably 7 years ago.
Right.
And I have to admit, there was, there was a little bit of pull some things out of the sky when we calculated, did that first calculation.
Right, there were a few, there were a few, there was like a, a school that had a 2-year baseline because, you know, of failures, and so there was, yeah. And I could probably find some counterparts of mine that maybe have done that, have moved the baseline up, that have done big capital work, and we might be able to see how that worked.
Might be interested if we could get some feedback as to how they've handled large mechanical renovation work. And just clarification, so you're saying that you're, you're feeling like you've seen no change in your support from synergistics that, you know...
No, they've, they're great.
Okay, okay, good.
Just, just a point of interest for the future. With the governor's latest proposals, he's given us a new target date of which New York State will become 100% renewable energy, which means he's going to push the sources of energy to systems that don't burn up resources. In other words, we take oil out of the ground, we can't replace it. We take natural gas out of the ground, we can't replace it. He's looking to use energy sources that are renewable every year, well, wind power, ocean, ocean, if you have, solar panels like that. My concern, not concern, but I think it, we need to have a projection as to, as we move forward in that part of the job, what is the expectations in terms of the cost of the raw energy we're using? I don't know if solar energy is as efficient cost-wise as oil or natural gas or something like that. We may suddenly see costs going up as you shift the source. And I mean, I found that out from Central Hudson. They offered us an opportunity to select a distributor or an energy source that promised you things like, "All of the energy we're going to pump into the system is sustainable." And the first year, it looked great, we got the sustainable energy and lower costs.
Get back, you're going to get back.
By year 3, it turned out to be, yeah, sustainable energy, but the energy costs had gone up 15%.
Yes.
Which they, you know, they sort of sucked it up the first 2 years and got you on the 3rd year, but they didn't tell you they were getting it until, you know, somebody blew the whistle on them.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the technologies are still growing, you know, solar, and, and I've heard stories all over the place, but we're still not seeing solar projects that have the payback that, that most people want to see, yeah.
We still have the fights going on about the, the energy fields out in the oceans, the fishermen are fighting, it's saying it's taking away my livelihood, and there's a whole bunch of things going on.
In communities...
That's going to go back and forth, up and down, you know, communities are fighting over solar, solar farms and stuff, yeah. So we don't know where that's going to go, and at some point in time, it should be, to be fair to everyone, we should be keeping, being aware of that and saying, "Yeah, we saved..." Percentage-wise, we saved the same percentage, but we lost money because the sources were getting more expensive in a way that we couldn't control because the governor said. And this is one of the few ideas where I, you know, I don't use my favorite statement is I always worry about the governor speaking out of the wrong order. I think this is a laudable goal that we got to, you know, push all the way around, so... I'm not going to fault him as much on this one as some of the other things you said.
Well, yeah, and I would agree. I think that it's, it's up to, to government agencies to invest in technology. I mean, that's what's going to bring the cost of this down for everyone is investment.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
And before Jill leaves, just to apropos a little announcement, Jeff and I just signed for the FDR and Havelin projects to be submitted to the state ed department, so we're on time, on schedule, the next board meeting. Our construction manager's going to give us a little update.
Have you considered a standalone solar unit?
Um, no. We have property that could support that, but it was, we were always told, we're not interested in investigating that right now. Just the cost of it is, is prohibitive. By the time that you, the technology changes so rapidly, that a few years down the road, what you have is obsolete, and unless you're buying it outright, you're doing a, a purchase agreement, and it just hasn't been proven to be cost-effective for schools. So we were told not to, you know, look any further into that at this time.
Standalone solar, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have a preliminary budget update from Linda.
Thank you. So Doug's already been heckling me about the time, so I'll do my best.
This is preliminary.
That's why you're sitting down there.
Yeah. So this is, yes. So this is actually our first preliminary budget presentation. The last presentation was the rollover, where we had assumed that everything would stay the same. Now, over the next few presentations, you'll see a progression. You're, you're seeing the budget progress how it does for us at the cabinet level. This presentation has already changed, so the next meeting is, is already different on that presentation. But in, tonight, we're talking about the requests that came through, through, from the administrators, and all of that is reflected here. There are some assumptions that we're still working on because we don't have final information, but we're assuming, the governor's budget proposal was a 1.42% increase, so we're assuming that, that'll be reflected in the next budget presentation when we show the revenues. The final state aid numbers don't come out until hopefully the end of March, before the state, the state's fiscal year ends. The legislative budget is sometimes different than the governor's proposal, and last year, the legislature gave us quite, quite a bit more than the governor had proposed. I haven't heard anyone talking about that, the possibility of that this year, but it's still an unknown. The change in the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, is 2%, or it's actually more than 2%, but because that's the part of our tax cap that's limited to 2%, we'll be using that in that formula. I will show you the tax cap calculation at the next meeting, too. Our tax-based growth factor is another part of the tax cap, but that's specific to Hyde Park. New York State tells us what that number is, and it's actually 1.005. It's, in my opinion, very low, but it's low across the state. That represents the actual changes in real property, so it would be any new, not new property that comes on the rolls, but any renovations to buildings or new buildings. We've estimated our health insurance at 8%, as an 8% increase. We won't know that final number until March, and we'll adjust the health insurance budget then. We estimated TRS, which is the Teachers Retirement System, the pension cost, to be at 9.5%. I did get the final rate this week, and it's actually lower, it's 8.66%, so we'll see even more savings in that code. And the Employees Retirement System, which is the pension system for the non-certified staff, that rate fell from 14.9 to 14.09%. And probably the biggest issue that we have this year, it's actually really just the biggest factor, is that our first payment for the Duchess BOSI's capital project will be due on July 15th, so it'll be included in this budget. That payment is $392,000, and there's a few slides later on, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Linda, I read, there was an article written, I wonder if you want to comment on it. In the government's comments on why he had chosen to not, to exclude the BOSI's capital projects from being removed from consideration, he said it was based on the fact that there was no public vote to accept that.
Right, that is what he said.
Which turned out to be, you know, obviously for us at least, is not true. We had a public vote, so...
There is...
Has there been any, any rumors that he might recant on that since he was wrong?
I don't think so, because that's been brought to him for a couple of years now, and he's always turned it down, for the same reasoning, I believe. And there are, there are some...
Say he turned it down, he keeps stating the same thing.
Yeah.
It's not voted on.
No, he'll say that. There are some, there are, a part of our budget for BOSI's that's considered capital might not be voted on, but for an actual capital project, it is voted. And the Duchess County voters did approve the project.
So you gather from my comments that I'm not 100% supportive of everything the governor says?
Yes, yes.
Open-minded, Dan, open-minded, that's good.
I keep track of my orifices.
So in this iteration of the budget, we are showing a $2.8 million increase, or That first payment for the BOSI's capital project is included in that second line for BOSI's contractual expenses and supplies. You'll notice in the transfers to other funds that we added back the $100,000 capital outlay project. This is something that we want to do every year, because if we have at least, if we have one project where we spend $100,000 or less, we would get 100% of the aid back in the following year. When we first started this, we were a little aggressive, and we thought we could vote, have a project voted, and then, and the next year, plan it, bid it, and get the work done, but that didn't work out. We're, we're going with a little more conservative plan. I talked to Jason, our financial advisor, and from now going forward, we'll always propose the $100,000 project, but the year after it's voted, we'll use that year to plan the project and bid it out, and then do the work in the year after that. So we still have a project that was voted before that'll be finished this summer, that's a bathroom project at the middle school. And this project will be to finish the lobby bathrooms at the high school. We had done the ladies' room before, and we'll, we'll do the men's room next. So you'll see also, there's no change in the debt service payments. I will be getting that information from our financial advisor before our next meeting. You may remember that when we had the capital project vote, we did, talked about increasing our, the local share for the capital projects by a little bit. I'm estimating that for next year, it'll be about $640,000 increase, but we're also going, we're also going to see an increase in our, in our revenues, because we agreed during that capital project vote, too, to move $610,000 into the general fund from our debt service fund. So we'll have an additional $610,000 revenues, $610,000 in revenues that will offset the increase in the debt service. All right, so we are required to report the budget in its 3 components, its program, admin, and capital. The program costs include regular and special ed instruction, co-curricular activities, athletics, and transportation. Administrative costs include the, the board of education costs, central administration, finance, our legal costs, and our human resources office. And the capital includes facilities, operations, and maintenance, debt service, and our capital outlay projects. So one thing that's really interesting is the BOSI's capital project is not considered capital for us, it has to be included in the admin portion. So we had talked before about always striving to keep the admin portion below 10%, so my first concern was it would push it over. I don't think that'll happen this year. I don't think that'll happen this year, because we're paying the lowest amount, but in the next two years, I think our admin costs might be over 10%, just because of that Bocis Capital
So, if you could go back to that one slide, just to add a little clarity for people that are confused by, when we vote on the Bocis budget here, as when you vote on the Bocis budget as a board, you're only voting on their admin portion. So, that's why Cuomo says you're not voting on their capital, because their budget is broken down, admin capital program, and as the local district in a Bocis, when we get together to do that Bocis budget vote on the Tuesday, you're just voting on their admin portion. And we think that's where Cuomo is confused.
Mistake, yeah.
That, yeah, we don't vote annually on the Bocis capital portion of their annual budget, but when it comes to new capital construction project for a Bocis, we all voted as a county, so. It was just timely, though.
So, I do have a couple of slides about the Bocis Capital Project, and I have some options to talk about, too. I do wanna say, I might come back at another presentation with even more information. I did review this with Jason when I met with him, and he thinks there might be, on the next page, there's some options, he thinks there might be a fourth option for the next two years. So, just, you know, I'll talk about what I have here now, but I'll probably add it to another presentation, too. So, overall, the total Bocis Capital Project is $36.8 million. That was voted by the Duchess County taxpayers, or the voters. Hyde Park share, which is based on our school district size mostly, is 3.2 million. We will get aid on that after we make the payments. In total, we can expect about $1.5 million in aid, so our total cost for that project will be just about $1.6 million. Now, Bocis is actually using a financial advisor, too, and it's the same that we use, the same firm, which is good for us, and they calculated when the payments might be due for that project, and determined how much each school should pay and when. So, our first payment is due on July 15th, 2019. That's why it has to be included in this budget, and it's $392,400. And then, for the next two years, in 2020, we'll pay the 1.5 million, and we'll pay 1.2 million in 2021. So, we are paying upfront the $3.2 million, and we'll get the aid after the payments are made.
So, we get the aid back after the project's completed?
No, it's a little different for Bocis. We'll probably get it the year after that it's paid. So, there was talk that it's due to us the same year we pay it, but the Bocis business office said they wouldn't be able to get the information to SED in time for us to get those payments. So, we're estimating that we'll get the payment for the aid in the year after we make the payments.
So, we can expect some reimbursement in 2020 for the payment we made in 2019?
Yes.
But you haven't estimated that. We're not looking at that money until next year's budget?
Right.
Okay.
And that's something that we'll get, our financial advisor does our debt service budget for us, so when Jason does that, he'll include that number for us. So, the three options that I'm showing here, like I said, there might be a fourth option, which I can go over briefly, too, if you want to, but I'll have more information about that later, at a later presentation. But, the first thing we could do is to finance the entire amount. The board has already approved the resolution to do that. We were actually praised, because Jay was the first district clerk to get all that information back to Bocis. So, we could finance the whole, the entire amount of the 3.2 million through serial bonds. However, a drawback to that would be, would incur interest expense. So, if there is a way that we could afford to pay it without borrowing, I would recommend that, that option. So, the second option is to include the payments every year in the budget, and to fund it with anticipated tax revenues. However, because we can't exclude Bocis Capital Projects from the tax cap, I don't think that's a good idea either, because now we're limiting how much we have to spend on our program and other costs. So, my recommendation, at least for this year now, is to include the payment in the budget, but to fund it with existing fund balance. So, every year, we do have some money that we appropriate to the budget to close the budget gap, and we should just also include the amount of the payment for the capital project that's due in July. And then, in the next two years, if we happen not to have the money available, the funds available, we could borrow at that time, because the board has already issued that resolution, or we could come up with fund balance. So, the option four, that I may come back to with, is something that Jason suggested. He said there's a county upstate that had a Bocis Capital Project, and their schools are transferring any extra fund balance they have into their capital projects fund. Now, it's not a reserve, it's their regular capital projects, and when it's time to pay the actual bill, they're transferring the money back into general fund and paying it that way. I'm not sure if we can actually do that. I ran it by our auditors, and they don't like that idea at all, but if other school districts are doing it, that might be something that could be-
What would be the advantage of that?
If we have extra, we can't reserve for this. So, if we were to have extra fund balance, it would be a way that we could move it out of general fund, and really, actually, typically, or technically, save for this project. Otherwise, it stays-
It's like creating a reserve.
Yes.
Without creating a reserve.
Right, exactly.
You're just overfunding your capital project.
Right. So-
It's interesting.
When I have more information from Jason, I'll bring it here, and see what we think of that. All right. So, I don't have anything else tonight, other than just to say that we will have a budget presentation at every meeting from now until the budget vote. At the next meeting, on the 28th, I'll present the tax cap calculation. I'm just waiting for one piece from that, and that's the debt service budget from our financial advisor, but because we are increasing our debt service amount, I think that our tax levy limit will come in a little high. I think we're gonna be just under 3%. So, we'll have that. On March 14th, George will present the bus proposition, and then we'll have the, hopefully, we'll have the final preliminary budget, where it's ready for the superintendent to make her recommendation on April 23rd. We'll have the budget hearing on May 9th, and the vote is on May 21st. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I've got one. If we decide that we need to sell bonds to cover the 2020 or 2021 Bocis capital, so the option number one, what's the timing on that? When would we need to put that in motion in order to meet that July 15th deadline?
Well, we could do it during budget season next year, because if we aren't ready to have the bonds, we could actually ban, so we could get the bond anticipation note, which doesn't take too much of a turnaround. I know, I believe we have a timeline that we got from Bocis about when that would need to be done, because we have to have, I believe it's 45 days from the time that the board decides to do that, although they technically did it already. So, the board already agreed or approved financing, and then we had the, we had the 45-day period for people to comment.
Right.
I'm not sure if we have to do that for a ban or a bond going forward.
Okay. I was just looking from a timing standpoint, so that we're not, it's not all of a sudden it's a rush, we've gotta do something, just, you know, so we can all know that, all right, by March, or April, whenever we-
I'll know before then if we need to. I do, I start doing the fund balance projections in December. I don't talk about it too much, because I found that it, there's a lot of variance between December and the middle of March, when I have a better number, but it's still a good enough number at that point to know if we would need to finance.
If we decide to bond it, do we have, do we need another public vote on it?
No, no, we don't.
Thank you. Any others? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. We're off to a good start.
At this time, can I have a motion to open public participation? Some moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Closed, motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone and state your name.
Steve Hughes, District President. You probably said this, but it wasn't quite clear. Regardless of how you fund the Bocis Capital Project, that payment, which, not this, not next year, but the year after, of about one and a half, was it 1,000 or a million?
Million, million.
One and a half million, that's gonna be part of your tax cap limit, is that correct? So, my math doesn't fail me, that's about 1.5% right off the bat, and I think the tax increase limit is probably gonna be much less than that. I was wondering if there's any concerted effort to try and get Cuomo to change his mind. I mean, we're not the only district going through this. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Seeing none at this time, public participation is now closed. Linda, do you wanna answer? Any?
Yeah, I know that the Duchess Business officials have been talking a lot about the governor's opinion about the Bocis Capital Project, and we've been just discussing what we might be able to do about that. So, I think there might be some advocacy efforts at that level, and I think-
Yeah, I would add also, the Duchess County School Board Association recently had an advocacy day, of which that was one of our items that were presented to our local politicians, and then also, the New York State School Facilities Association is also advocating for that bill, those bills to be brought back up. Unfortunately, I think some of the sponsors of the bills were not re-elected or didn't run again, so they're having to find some new sponsors, but it's out there, it's a hot topic for all of us in the, from a facilities world and in the school world, I think, I wouldn't be surprised to see it come up. Quite frankly, what I see is we've gotta get, find a way to get into Cuomo's office and help educate him and understand, you know, what the difference is, but, yeah, it's not, nobody's giving up on it by any means.
I love your optimism that it can be reeducated.
Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports?
The Policy Committee is meeting next week.
Okay, so, moving on to consent agenda, can I have a motion for the consent agenda? Some moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yeah, I have one question on the budget transfer. The transfer we're coming out of the media, library, media, is that state-directed funds for media, or it's being transferred into teacher supplies?
Yeah, so, the, yes, the library materials code is stay aided. We receive aid on what we spend. The amount that we have budgeted is much more than what we can receive in aid, even with the transfer. So, we're, next year, we'll receive $22,938 in library materials aid, if we spend that much. After this transfer, we still have, we're still over that number by $6,000.
Are we gonna be expecting that from other schools, transferring into teacher supplies?
No.
So, it's a one-time, for one school?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Closed, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1, Special Education placements?
Some moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I reviewed the pack and recommended being passed as presented to the board.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.2, the overnight field trip to Washington DC trip? Some moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just have one question. Is the ratio of chaperones to students, is that typical? It's, we're about a 1 to 12 and 1/2, which, to me, seems a little high.
Yeah, I need to look, because it's different for elementary. I can look into that and get back to you. The ratio for elementary and secondary is different, but it does seem like-
Yeah, I mean, it's 12, 12 chaperones to 150 students. Seems just a little bit high, or maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, if it's what we've worked with in the past, you know, from a ratio standpoint, and we've been successful, then I have no concerns.
We haven't lost a student yet.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3, vendor agreement with Gabriella Friar Piano Compunest? Some moved.
Second.
So, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4, memorandum of agreement for Sedcar? Some moved.
Second.
So, any discussion?
I don't remember seeing any kind of item on agendas from past years for this. Is this data collection new, as a result of some other things, or are we just combining a bunch of things we hadn't done in the past?
Yeah, I can answer that. This has been part of the federal grant for, under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that's required. It's called flow-through. So, some of the federal funding we get has to go to private schools, so that's happened for many years. When the contracts came to me, as they usually do, I had a thought that they should be approved by the board, as all contracts are. So, they've been sort of separate, because we're really just a flow-through agency for the federal money. And Linda, did I miss anything about that?
No.
So, it's the first time, because it just occurred to me that you should see it.
But this money is guaranteed by the federal government to get it?
We already have our allocation, and this is the amount they're supposed to get.
The allocation we got is what we're spending out here.
Yeah, we get a lot for us, as well, but this is their part, and we have to have these agreements in place.
So, for us to do that is not, we're not concerned about suddenly not getting the federal funds and being-
No.
All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Can I have a motion to open public participation? Some moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Closed, motion carries. Is anybody else, your second attempt to address the board? Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There's no more other matters deemed necessary by the board. We do have need to go to a second executive session. Can I have a motion to appoint Dan as the, the pro temp?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I saw his face.
Opposed, motion carries.
What was the rate of pay on that?
It's triple what I normally get. It's got three zeros.
Can I have a motion to go into second executive session?
Don't move.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Who motioned?
Second.
Down at that end, I don't know.
All right. It went too quick. Who voted for it and who seconded it?
Doug, one. Carl, two.
Okay. There will be no discussion after the executive session.
Well, we have, we have to come back, we have to come back.
Just to close, yeah.
Close, close.
There'll be no action taken.
There'll be no action taken, yeah.
This is where Jeff learns how difficult his job is.
We have to vote. All those in favor?
Yes, I thought we voted.
Motion passes. There you go.
I wonder what I do with my card?
So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there any discussion?